I'd like to call this meeting or the first order of business to the table. My apologies to the right, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, living in the essence of all.
First order of business, 93rd of the agenda. I'll say. We have a, I need a motion. And second.
Okay, I'd like to say maybe we can move the agenda a little and adjust it so the county can speak before right after the first five entries here. Move them right, right ahead on Liquor Store.
Yeah.
So the company people can get over here.
We all second that. The motion is set in all favor. Aye.
Both.
So carry.
Recommend approving the August 19th, 2025 council meeting. You have a chance to read it in the deceptions. Corrections, motion, I'll recommend a motion on that.
I'll say.
We have a recommendation set in all favor.
Aye.
Posed, so carry. Recommend approving the August 2025 claims list. You have a chance to see them. Any questions on the needed claims? You have a recommendation.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a recommendation set in all favor.
Aye.
Posed, so carry. Recommend accepting these first ones, let's use the financial statement, various funds as of August 31st, 2020.
I'll make that recommendation. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Posed, so carry. Recommend proposing a date for the public meeting to discuss 2026 general fund budget in category 1026.
Should we do it at 6 o'clock before voting?
We usually do it at December or like.
Yeah, we usually do it after beer season, though we haven't said anything.
What's the first Tuesday in, should we do it the first Tuesday in December? And what day is that?
The 9th. The first Tuesday is the 2nd, the 2nd one is the 9th.
Meeting would be the 9th. Why do you do it separate from the regular meeting?
Yeah, we probably should. It should, it could be pretty long. Why don't we have, why don't we do it the?
December 2nd.
Yeah, December 2nd, we'll be fine.
6 o'clock.
December 2nd, 6 o'clock. Send out notifications for that. Everybody check your calendars if you can't make it. Uh, we still have plenty of time to adjust calendars, so right now, December 2nd, 6:00, 6:00 PM. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, moving on, uh. Well, uh, so the county, Jason, uh, if we move you ahead to Liquor Store.
Okay.
So what do you got to say?
Well, we're going to come out to the table here in case you've got a mic and then.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Council, uh, for allowing me to, uh, be here this evening. Uh, I'm here, uh, on behalf of Koochin County, uh, to see if there's interest in forming, uh, an alliance, uh, AKA ambulance taxing district, uh, with Koochin County, um, to provide ambulances to the International Falls Ambulance Service, uh, and within the ambulance service area, uh, which would include and encompass, uh, the city of Rainier. Uh, that would also include the unincorporated areas of Koochin County. That would, uh, also, the ASA stretches out into St. Louis County. St. Louis County would be, you know, uh, make their own decisions on, on what they'd like to do. But I verbally have heard that they would be considered being a partner. I know there's some, uh, consideration with being a partner, uh, within the city of International Falls or with the city of International Falls. Um, I think this may be a way to kind of move forward with helping this system. Uh, I think, I, I think we need, we need this system. It's an important system to have, but I also believe that they're, they are going to need some help. What this would do, um, it would designate a, a certain portion of net tax capacity over the portion of Rainier and Koochin County outside the townships. Uh, there is no townships, but the unincorporated areas of Koochin County to create and collect a fund, uh, that would be designated towards purchasing ambulances for the International Falls Ambulance Service. Uh, we would have, uh, technically, uh, without getting too far into the weeds, we would have a contract with them to purchase those ambulances on whatever, on whatever type of rotation that is designated, if there were a board form. Um, then that's would be our obligation and our contribution to the service. And basically, we have, we have some of the information that we have, uh, that we've had here. Uh, the first is International Falls Ambulance Service Area. Uh, on the bottom, it says ambulance service calls. It kind of gives you, uh, the 911 calls over the last three years for '21, '22, and '23. Um, you can see the percentages that the services is actually used. Um, the, the other map, I don't know if you have, is, is the actual entire county, uh, with ambulance and fire. Now, it's just kind of an overview of how these, these services overlap and extend throughout the county. Uh, we have thought and tried to, uh, team up with the rural fire. Rural fire area does not, is not the same area as the ambulance service, so we weren't able to do that, at least right now. Uh, legislation possibly could be changed depending on any essential service status throughout the state of Minnesota. That may be able to change that. And I think, you know, I'm not going to go too far off into, into the weeds, but, you know, in the future, I think we really, um, as, as public servants, we really need to look at the long, long range plan of, of the rural areas of Minnesota. I think where our population is declining, we, we're going to have to kind of consolidate some of these, uh, services in order to have them. So I, I don't know that we're necessarily there rate this second, but I really think that in the future, we're going to have to consider moving out and about, outside of these limits to include other areas, uh, and, and spread that service out a little bit. Uh, one of the sheets that you have here is the net tax capacity. Um, the net, total net tax capacity is 10,539,258. Uh, and for, uh, to be able to collect that 150,000, that's the kind of a jumping off number. It's a 1.2 percent of, or 1.42% of that net tax capacity. And I can have, don't speak to that further. Uh, I know very little of the net tax capacity. I barely understand it, so, um, but I think is that, is that accurate? Uh, 1.42%?
Yeah, the net tax capacities are based on the property's classification. And I know those classification rates are set by Minnesota Department. Um, for instance, home state, you know, about 100,000, the net tax capacity, the same as seasonal rent is 1%. From the cheap, for example, a seasonal rent property, you can tell you that's 34,700, the net tax capacity is 3,247. And each classification has their own classification rate. Uh, and then that net tax capacity is only five, five percent rate to give you what your taxes will be for the year on that type of property. So that seasonal rent, that would be a tax of 347, would be 46,000.
And that would be 60, yeah, 61, 62, just to give you an idea of what, of what those classes.
Yeah, I see your example, sir. That's kind of good. A person can kind of figure what went costing them.
Yeah.
I've got some questions with that, but I'll, I'll, when you're done, I'll, I'll ask my question. You go ahead.
Well, no, I, I. Well, I, I just, I just think, you know, it's, it's, I know we're all in, we're all in the same area. We live in the same area. We know the same people.
Can you not give the mic, Jason?
I'm sorry, yes. Yeah. Well, I'd just like to say, you know, we all live in the same area. We all know the same people. We all need the same types of services. And I think really kind of teaming up and working together, at least where we can, where it makes sense, I really think of, is going to be important for now and in the future. Uh, like I said, we've had, we've had a population study here done, uh, with the Minnesota Demographers Office. And, you know, our population unfortunately is going to continue to decline, you know, uh, to, to the point of about 8,500 in the next 20 years. You know, we have, uh, that's countywide. So we have, you know, right now, we have about 11,800 people in the county as of, but took 2023, uh, memo from the Census Bureau. So, you know, I really think that, you know, uh, unfortunately, we're going to have to kind of stop and put the brakes on, on some of the services and take a good long look at how we can consolidate and make these things work. Otherwise, we are in jeopardy of losing them, and I think the city is, is proving that. Um, with this possible partnership, you know, I think we take the staffing model and city decisions out of the equation. I think that we provide, uh, hardware, AKA ambulances, some of the equipment that goes in the ambulances. And that is our contribution. And how they staff and manage that, I think, would be them. And I think there's more work to do legislatively for, you know, our local leaders to do, uh, state and federal wise. I know it's going to be a long journey to do that, but I think there's opportunities for us to help move this along, uh, to the next level too. And, you know, the state has helped us out and they've helped the city and the local ambulance services out throughout our county, uh, with some funding, but it's just a stock gap temporary fund. It's not a permanent type of deal. And they don't believe it, maybe I don't believe either, that it should be a permanent safer fund for them and a rotation continuing.
So just so I understand this, uh, so this particular levy or this district specifically for ambulances? This isn't for the staffing? This is just to supplement, to get them through their ambulance needs? So this is not, this is like what a one year thing into your thing?
Well, this, thank you for the question. This would be kind of an ongoing participation. Uh, that, that being said, it would be a contract with the city of International, if they obviously, if they agree, if everybody agrees, you know, we got to get to that finish line. But if they were to agree to providing ambulances for their, their ambulance service, uh, we would then draw up a contract within the area, the EMS service area board that would be created. Uh, and then those, those decisions would be run through EMS board, the respective councils, boards beyond that, and then would be presented, uh, to the city. Obviously, they would have to accept that, and it would be a contract for, for services. We would be contracting with them to provide ambulances so they would come and pick us up in the area. And that's kind of how the contract would be worded, not verbatim, obviously, but to a certain extent.
Well, first of all, it's to buy ambulances. You're basically finding a fund to purchase the ambulance. Couple of questions on that is what is the turnover rate on the ambulance? I think, I believe they got four now. I'm not sure.
Yep.
In age capacity, I don't care. Do they replace one every four years? Uh, that's a lot of miles. You have four ambulance, I, I don't think they generate that miles. They only generate 1,400 trips a year. If they're all Duluth, you know, that would be, you know, 300 miles times 14, it'd be 50,000, you know, 40, 45,000 miles. So obviously, you don't have to replace something every year, so it'd be maybe every three years, you know, you'd scale up there. So basically, if you add a cap on this proposal you got, and if it's 150,000, because you're setting it up against something, uh, is it 50,000 a year and then 150,000 at the end of the third year with an inflation rate, because it's 153 years from now? Or is it 150,000 a day, 150,000 next year, 150,000 year after?
Well, therein, therein lies the question. I mean, if it's, if it's a two-year rotation, that would replace four ambulances in eight years. So you have a two-year rotation on each ambulance, so you'd order one two-year rotation, order one.
You have a big, only 10 miles on it.
Well, and, and that's something that we can get into the weeds.
Well, you know what I'm saying?
I do, yes.
Just take your number of ambulance calls and you have an average time, it's two and a half hours. How far can you drive in two and a half hours? That's coming and going at 60 miles an hour. You're talking, you know, you know, 100 miles.
Right.
So in, you know, 1,400 trips, we got 140,000 miles divided by four ambulance. So you're not going to wear one out. You know what I mean?
Yep, yep.
You know, if you flip one every year.
Yep.
Pretty soon, you'd have, you know, one with no miles on and, you know, two with 50,000 and then.
Right, yeah, no, no, yeah, no.
So, um, you know, so I can see that, like you say, I don't want to get in the weeds on the, on this, but I got some other questions on, on this. How, how you actually calculated, uh, you know, the, the terms you got here? What, how do you handle apartment dwellers? I mean, ambulance call people, not property.
Yep.
And so we're looking to service the people.
Yep.
You know, all 11,000, or is, is there 11,000 people in their district?
Uh, about 9,200-ish.
Okay, 9,000 people.
Yep.
So how do you handle the apartment dwellers when it comes to a property tax? Does the apartment dweller get it? Or does the owner of the apartment house, he passes it on to rent?
That would be, it would be on the valuation of the, of the commercial property, so that would be.
So then he raises the rent to everybody to, to cover the?
I would assume it would be a pass on. We looked at this too, and we were studying this before, uh, at, at the ambulance steering committee. We looked at a flat fee. I'm a huge fan of the flat fee. One property, one flat fee, right? Um, apartment, maybe it's not a full flat fee.
Well, like I said, the sewer district, a commercial property.
Right.
Had four assessments, five assessments for individual. And so handling the fee, because I think what we're talking about is how we service the people here. So let's put it on per head, not a piece of the property, because like I said, how do you handle the property owner? How do you handle a trailer park? Uh, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
How do you handle a family with 10 kids in their family? And what? The chances are you're going to go the ambulance more than that. So.
Right.
I, I want to think, keep things kind of fair here. I'm not against everything, but I just think each formulas have to be looked at, because once they're cash, changing the formula, the idea is, you know, if you come up with a formula, but I guess what I'm trying to say, there's probably no tax that is perfectly fair. It's always going to be, one guy can come up with, well, I don't even use his school. Why am I getting charged for airport? Why am I getting charged for the school?
Right, yeah.
You know, we all get a share, but in this particular case, it's pretty clear to me, you're using it per, at the person. You know what I mean? Eventually, you know, I may use it more than others, using several times, but again, you're ensuring that they have a good ride.
Right.
To the, to the hospital.
Yes.
I had a lot of talks with host shop here last week on this, and, uh, I don't know either. Gave him a couple ideas. Is the ambulance rate based on mainly our Far East Falls, Duluth, maybe Fargo, maybe Bellegie, uh, depending on where the choice of the patient is? Uh, do they, you know, and I always say Duluth is a $500 trip or whatever, but is the base, is there a base rate? And because we're so far from the regional hospitals, that we have to make many more trips to Duluth. But if that mileage rate's right, shouldn't make any difference.
Right, right.
If the mileage rate's not correct, maybe that's what they should do, you know, because of cost of capital. We're talking about buying four ambulance, because we got to travel more distance for the same old people. So he's working on some of this stuff, and I'm glad he is, but he understands the same usage here, but.
Yep.
So I think what I'd like to do, and I don't, you see the one that does the math and this stuff?
The tax math, absolutely.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. I, I want to know how it's taxed, the property owners or, or apartment dwellers and that.
The statute, we have some statute that allows us to set up the taxing district, specifically states that it must be based on net tax capacity. We've tried to look at it from angles, what we could run it like as a support next service district, where you do the flat fees, and our county attorney will adjust to that too. At this point, we cannot do that. The only way you can run a statutory taxing district is based on net tax capacity.
Yeah, you see what I'm saying? This is really unfair, because basically, you, you're penalizing property owners. I mean, I probably, I don't know, well, we got a hut, shack, we got a, we got a, you know, maybe a cabin on the lake, uh, a commercial property, residential property, and they all get taxed, but there's only one guy living there, only one guy using it, or one family.
Right.
So now all of a sudden, we're paying six, seven times what the average property would. So again, you know, like I say, there's not a tax that I can think of as perfect, but it's a long ways, as far as I'm concerned, because of the, we're basing on tax capacity, which is value of property, right? And we're talking about how we get people to the hospital. You know, I, I mean, the usage, you know, it's like a usage tax. Why don't we look at a usage tax?
Well, those are great ideas, and if, if it were easy.
Stuff out there.
Yeah, I know, I know. I hear you.
You know, I'm just looking at everybody. I mean, Todd must have, you know, I know you got a couple of huts and shacks and stuff. Same with me, I can't count. I got, I get 96, I think, property statements. So this ain't going to be $150 for me, and, and I really care, my share more, I always have that. But it's the other people, you know, you're trying to, especially apartment dwellers, you know?
Right, and, and if, if we could do a flat fee, I mean, that's what we discussed.
Flat fees are great.
Uh, that's what we discussed early on, was a flat fee. Um, and legislatively, I think there would be some work to do to do that. I don't know what that would entail to get to that point. Um, essential service may be the angle there, but that would have to be a statewide type of deal, and that's going to not be easy. I think that's one of the, one of the things that I'm going to ask questions about to our legislators is, is what's their take on, on making this service an essential service? Because you get, you get away from a couple of different things. You benefit, uh, with the hourly thing. If you're an essential service, you go up to 48 hours instead of 40, uh, whereas they're at a 40, 40-hour work week now. Anything over 40 hours is overtime. Well, you can save money on overtime if you go to essential service. Essential service opens the doors to possibly insurance or coal pay or hospital coal pays. There, there's some opportunities there perhaps, maybe, if we could do that. Uh, the flat fee would be fantastic if we could. I, I would, I would be out for it, so.
Is that not an Illinois state statute? Is that why we don't, or is it something we can actually institute? Is that what they're saying?
We, we cannot do a flat fee at this point, from the information that we've.
No usage tax at all, or any way?
No, and we, we've, we've looked at this. I've asked the question over and over, um, and over again.
I've got the same email from. That's fine. I'm going to keep telling them.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
Well, okay, the usage tax is not, because that would be like a flat tax. You use it, then you put, you know, if you can't pay the bill, we put it against your property tax, and then so on and so forth. Again, you still have to figure out the apartment rent. That's a whole different animal. I don't know how you do that.
Yep.
But, uh, you know, another major thing here, you know, basically you have ALS and BLS. Have we canvassed the county, the city? Okay, we're going to stick with the ALS, but we're going to tax you another $500 per household. Or we'll go to the BLS, like Little Forest, there's no change in venue. Uh, there's actually less taxing, because way cheaper to operate. Your, your city's biggest problem is man hours. They get 47,000 man hours, 47,000 man hours in ambulance service, and only less than 4,000 billable. So that, that's where the issue is, but nobody wants to lay anybody off, because the people you'd be laying off is in paramedics, which is your ALS system, and you'd have to go to BLS system. So, you know, and this is a, you know, and have we canvassed, you know, obviously, the, the ambulance driver said, oh, we love the ALS, we like a lot of help in that, but have we canvassed the citizens that's saying, okay, this is it? We can have the ALS, we can maintain it, we can keep our police force the same, we can keep our sewer department the same, but it's going to cost everybody an extra, uh, 9,000 people, it would cost everybody an extra, you know, we're looking at $300,000 deficit, it would cost everybody, you know, $3,300 flat fee, or however you do it, it's going to cost everybody $3,400 more.
Well, with, with, with what I guess I would be proposing, or we would, we would be looking at, would be a partnership with Rainier, possibly with St. Louis County, to contract the purchase of ambulances for the city of International Falls. So that staffing model that they have would be irrelevant to us, because we would get, we would stay out of that. That would take the human out of the equation. Where we're purchasing equipment.
I understand, we're just going to buy a piece of equipment, whether they need it every year, that, that.
Well, that would be.
Now, do you need 150,000 every year? Because they're not wearing the ambulance out at a rate of 100, say if you only cost 150, probably more, but.
Right.
If you're using that number and you're putting the mileage on, like I'm thinking you're putting on, we started from zero, had all new ambulance, okay? Soon as we accumulate 150,000 dollars for the mileage.
Yep.
Yeah, we need a new one, okay? That's fine. But is that two years, one, I doubt it's one year. I don't think we put on 150,000 miles a year because of the number 1,400 ambulance calls, and 100, you know, 10 miles is 14,000, and 100 is, you know, so.
Yeah, and I think ALS is right around the $280,000 area, and I don't think that that's actually, it's not.
Well, you know, at 280,000, that's with all their equipment.
That's, yes.
They rarely buy one fully stocked, they just move the equipment.
Yes.
I know they use about $60,000. They throw away 50, 60,000 dollars worth of medicine a year that gets out of date.
Yep.
But, you know, that's all in their budget. That's why they're 300 grand in the hole, or whatever it is, if you hear. But they do move the, the cost of the ambulance. You know, you talk to ambulance, and if you want to all move bed lighters and stuff like that, well, yeah, you're up in the 200 grand. You're, you're running like a semi now, in a trailer.
Right.
You know, so those are things, go ahead.
Yeah, and I just, obviously, this is a discussion that has been happening, uh, for a while in Rainier, uh, with the city, with the county. Um, and I've tried to look and, and find creative solutions. Um, I've got very clear direction from, from my board, so, you know, we, we want to do something to help to provide the service. So now what, what's the, the vehicle for us to do that?
And that's what we're looking at.
Yep.
A vehicle to add some help.
Yep.
I understand you.
And so. Probably shouldn't have moved that up.
No, no, it's okay. I think I got supposed to be on one.
Um, and so in, in looking at all of the options, basically where, where I've come down to, um, is our, our one viable option for, for the county is, uh, emergency medical services taxing district. Um, there's a specific statute that allows us to do that, but it's, um, pairing with two or more political subdivisions. So, uh, the county, um, again, I, I get the, the sense from, from my client that there is an interest in pursuing this, but we need to pair with a different political subdivision. Now, if we do that, um, it's created by resolution of the, the governing bodies. So the county board passes a resolution, the city council passes a resolution, and those are our two political subdivisions that form. Now, by doing that, um, the resolution creates the taxing district, but it also creates a board. Um, and it's, so it's representatives, um, from, from your political, uh, governing body and, and ours. If St. Louis County joins on, uh, they would have the, the option of providing representation too. But then, with anything, that board determines how to spend that money. Chair's, uh, recommendation is, you know, we collect these, these tax funds and then use that to provide ambulances in the form of, you know, here is hard, hard equipment that, that we will afford, uh, put over. Once the district is formed, we can run an ambulance service ourselves. I don't think there's any interest, uh, in doing that, or contract either with the, the city or with, uh, some private entity. And where we, I guess, where we keep coming down to is, you know, what we, we don't want to get into managing an ambulance service.
And that's why you can't privatize ambulance in this area, because if you wanted to do an ALS system, you know, you're still, even if you had to fine tune it, cut wages and everything else, you're still going to have 40,000 man hours with only 1,400 calls. If you're, you know, and 4,000 chargeable hours, what do they have to charge to pay them bills? You see, that's why you can't go privately. But, and I'll bring this up again, because people do not understand this. You know, I, um, the LGA was incorporated. It was built, the architects of that, to specifically relieve, properly tax relief.
Yep.
Because that's how you generate income, that's what we're talking about here, raising taxes to pay for this thing. The city of International Falls, if they paid all their obligations to the airport, to the library, to, to the ambulance, would still have 2.8 million dollars more, which would amount to, uh, you know, about 60% more of the capital than the citizens that bring in. I, I mean, I've done the math for many times on this, but it's specifically for that. They're given that money because, so they don't have to raise property taxes. And now we're talking about coming, raising property taxes after they were given all that money. If they paid these bills first, then they could put that 2.8 in their general fund to pay, that's just a bonus, you know, because they still got 2.2, or to pay for the ambulance, pay for the thing. They still got 2.8 extra. And now you're asking us to pay more, because they got a big police department, they got this, they got that. That's great, but you can't afford it. Now, you, you know, I didn't help everybody. I don't think there's probably anybody in this room that's tried to help more people in this city than I have, and I'm not against that. But I just want to make that clear, because I don't think people understand, they've been given that money. And now you're, I bet you if you asked the citizens of Little Forest, if you want to increase their property by three, four. by three, four, five hundred dollar tax, that's what it'll go to for a person. There isn't a person in Little Fork that's going to say, oh, I think we can do that. Because they're filing the BLS system. And that's what we're talking about, whether it's BLS or ALS. Or if you want to maintain the ALS, the cities could have to do something else in their budget, whether maybe cutting out the district department or, you know, minimizing the police department, dressing them in brown instead of blue or whatever they have to do to help solve some issues. So I'm all up on this God, you know, I'm going to do my share of help, whatever the. When you have the commissioners, who's the commissioner from Little Fork?
Uh, Destry.
Destry?
Destry, yep.
Oh, sorry. And what did he say, boy?
Well, I, I won't speak for Destry.
He's up, he's up to the lake too. I know that. They didn't know he was in Little Fork too.
Yeah, he kind of, he encompasses a pretty decent area there. But, uh, yeah, no, I, I think that he, you know, at least verbally supports doing something. But that's to be determined. That's kind of why I think, I think that's kind of why we're here. I, I wouldn't be here, I guess, if I hadn't thought about this and tried to get creative in order to kind of try to pull something together to where we can afford to buy an ambulance. You know, it's a big service area. We've got a long ways to go to the hospital. Uh, when we go hospital to hospital transfers, that's, that's the biggest thing. I, I don't think necessarily the, the money loss is from a place up the lake or a place in town to the hospital. I think that the actual loss is, is, is a combination of a couple of things. I think it's the mileage that you're going and also the reimbursement rate that you're not getting. So the reimbursement rate.
I said back to Hostile, listen, our big deal here is what it should do is change the basis. We've got a base rate for everybody to use the ambulance. But second of all, mileage to what they call a, a regional hospital. You know, if we want, you know, MRIs, we're not going, you know, we got to go over. We got to travel, long and short of it. So I says, it, it should be doing, that's why I wish Adams here or someone would like to understand what, you know, like loggers get paid, you know, fifty cents a mile for every, every zone you get into, you get extra money. Maybe that's, and I don't know how the ambulance is based on that to give you a base rate, but maybe what we should do is have, keep the base rate the same, but increase the, the mileage. You know, because we're, we happen to be a hundred and sixty miles or, as I say, Sanford, we're a hundred and ten miles or a hundred miles from the regional hospital. That's what Hostile is going to take back to the, to the state and see. They say, okay, well, let's just increase this and that. This, basically, his, his problem is, is people in the metro, they, they don't care about LGA at all because they don't care if they have it or not. They got so much business and property taxes that it's a moot point for them, but.
Well, and that's, and that's, I guess, that's a great point. Um, and, and I agree. I, I think the idea of what, what we're trying to do is to try to keep it simple and stay out of that. We, you know, and I, I, I've looked at all the angles, not all the angles, but a lot of the angles on how this is funded. And, you know, and I think they do a great job with the service that they got and, and how they get to keep a, either ALS or BLS or whatever it happens to be is, is I would like to see that be their, their responsibility, I think. They're, they're the ones that hold the, the certificate to do that. I, I think it's our responsibility, I think, to help that a little bit. And I, I, I really think, um, we can always work on those other things all the time. And I continually would be thinking of how to do that.
Can you put like a cap rate on that, like per household? I don't want to talk about property because if you have legal, if you're per household. I mean, the sewer district, they didn't ask, some of the people live there. They didn't ask what your property is worth. They just said, you know, ten thousand, a twenty thousand dollar household, whatever that turned up. Could we do it per household?
No, and again, she's the, the math person.
Well, I could, so legally.
Yeah, but no, no, it's the, it's the levy.
You can't do it?
No, you can't do the.
Cap.
The, uh, X amount per household. It's the net tax capacity. It's, it's part of the levy. And so if you have, yeah, if you've got nine hundred properties and you get X number of taxes.
Okay, we just create a new tax. It's, it's called an ambulance tax.
I'll, I'll go with you.
Let's give, let's give everybody a, you know, a hundred dollar tax on, on every household. Just do that, no?
He would say no. I want to.
That, that, that's.
Yeah, no, I. I want, I want to do that.
Hey, I want to say yes still.
It would be, it would, it would make it simple. I think, I personally think it would be more.
I hope you got a good house.
What's that?
You got it, okay.
Well, no, but I mean, I think it would be great to be able to do that, to put a cap on that, but we, we just can't. I mean, I, I just think, you know, we've, we've kicked this can, um, down the road a ways, I guess. And I, I won't agree or disagree with how they run the service. Uh, that, that's, that's the city council's decision there and the citizens of, of that city council. So I'm going to let them decide on what they think is the right thing to do uh, for, for the, for the folks that are in the county and the greater outside of the county and the city limits area. I think that's, you know, at least for right now. I know they're all county residents. I understand that, but I really do think that this would be the best, simplest, uh, solution to kind of stay out, stay out of the business of the ambulance, still provide a, a service to the residents without getting into the business of the city of International Falls. I think, I.
I'd like some clarity. Can you give me some clarity again? Uh, you know, I'm hard of hearing and not that smart. Just clarity on property, uh, apartment dwellers, not non-owners of property. Their vote against, it's just going to go against the commercial property that they live in.
They would be taxed to the property owner based on the value of the building.
And then you'll pass that on.
We, we currently have no method.
How about earning capacity of a building? How about earning capacity of the building?
That is not in Minnesota statute at this time. The only avenue that we have that I can legally put on someone's taxes has to be spelled out in statute. We can't create our own tax. We have to find a statutory reason to put that tax on the statement.
So you can't add an additional rent tax?
No.
Or something like that?
No.
I'm just thinking, trying to get a formula so that everybody participates as equal as we can. You know what I mean? Uh, again, sales tax, that's the guy that buys the case, you're going to pay the sales tax. The guy that uses the ambulance is going to pay for that.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I've been doing a lot of talking. I don't think the council jumped in.
I, I just, you know, want, want specific clarity. So this would be, uh, an ambulance taxing district specific for ambulances separate from staffing? That's what I'm understanding. And is this in perpetuity for equipment needs of the ambulance owners? Or is this for five years until we renegotiate or recommit to this particular agreement? That's a, we would, you know, partner with the support.
So that when the taxing district is created, that we would also then create a, a board um, made up of representatives of whatever political subdivision is part of this. Um, that creates the district and the district is now, you can dissolve the district or a, any political subdivision can withdraw from the district. I'll warn you, if, if we create this and you decide to withdraw, you, that withdrawn doesn't take effect until two years after your resolution. So it's not like you say, that's it, we're, we're fed up with the city.
So you'd be on the hook for the tax that your citizens and constituents pay for that next two years and then you would be done?
Correct.
If you decided to dissolve?
Yep.
Because I, I mean, I, I, you know, I worked in healthcare for fifteen years and unfortunately, when it comes to costs for a service, like an advanced ambulance service, it comes down to dollars and cents, but when it's your family, when, when you need that, you want that advanced. And I think Mayor Wade brought up the idea of like canvassing, you know, what, what constituents, what people, taxpayers think. You know, I, I do a lot of watching on some of these public social media platforms, specifically with International Falls. And it seems like there's a lot of frustration in the increase of taxes and stuff that they're having to consider for all the updates and things, um, within the city. And so I, I, like, as a, as a member of Rainier and as someone that I know will one day need and like to have advanced ambulance service, I agree with you to the extent of like being able to participate somewhere where maybe we can get them ambulances and yet not have to get involved. I know what they're saying about the LGA and how, you know, maybe, you know, we think Falls should be spending their money differently in terms of what they set that money aside for, specifically for the ambulance fund. But I do think, you know, it's a unique situation. And I have also spoken to, um, Representative Hostile and it just seems like that's what communities are doing. I mean, do you guys know of any other options that other communities are doing other, outside of a, something like this? Because I haven't really read anything that's worked outside of just having to do something like this.
Jason, I got a question for you. You know, it, it's a tax proposing, but what we're proposing for is, it currently is to make a capital injection so we keep ambulance, to buy ambulance, and that's something, to keep, to buy ambulance to keep them in the serviceability, uh, way, you know. You read about a hundred thousand? Okay, that one gets a hundred thousand, we get a new one. What's it cost? So actually, then there'd be a board directing this. And, and so the capex would be for capital injection or the tax should be, and it would change probably every year. One year you don't need it, maybe next year you need more. So the capital injection would be to keep the ambulance serviceable. That's what I'm hearing. But, you know, you picked a round number. That might be what you think it is today. But again, if they don't get the mileage or all of a sudden they start running where they need two or three of them, you know. Actually, if they start running where they need more ambulance, then, then their shortfall is wages. That's going to take care of itself and that's going to help. So wear them out, you want to wear out your equipment, but you want to make sure. So that's what I'm looking at. Maybe this would have to look at the capital injection necessary to maintain a usable fleet. And that's what you should be, I mean, you, you picked a number, somebody said, well, what is that number? And you grab a number off the air. That's, I think, where we are right now.
Yep, yep.
But when you analyze it, maybe it's more, maybe it's less. That's one thing, you know, I think we can look at real quick and that's simply by how many miles you're putting on it and what does it cost to run an ambulance per mile? And if it's a hundred thousand miles and fifty cents a mile, it's fifty thousand bucks. You know, it's, it's a math exercise at that point. But then your capex, you know, your property tax, the tax you're proposing or the taxing district, that would have to be a floater, you know what I mean? Otherwise, either that or you build up the fund and then at a certain, at a certain time, you can see you're using a hundred grand a year, a hundred grand a year, we've collected a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty. Pretty soon, okay, this year's no tax. So we can do something like that too. I mean, it's just a creative idea.
Yep.
But, you know, that's a math exercise.
Well, you, you, you're exactly right. So any, any increase or decrease would go through that board that would be formed. So if there's a fund balance there that's extraordinary and, and we're good to go, well, then by resolution from that, from that board, that's from that subordinate tax board, they can make that recommendation to reduce that amount. And then that recommendation would then go to the respective councils or boards again, so. And we, we just, we just approved this here, uh, some of the taxing districts throughout the county. And, and I think that, you know, the, generally speaking, they go up. But honestly, a lot of them, there's only a couple of increases on the, on the ones that we approved today. And a lot of them were flat. They were no increase. So, uh, you know, for fire districts and ambulance districts as such, you know, throughout the county and Little Fork area and, you know, out west and stuff for the first responders and things like that, so. Um, yeah, this keeps, you know, and I, I'm just trying to find a simple way to keep us out of the, out of the personnel and the staffing of the system. And I agree with you and I think once a board or if a board were to be formed to say, hey, we've looked at this and I would trust you, I would trust many other people other than myself to figure out, hey, this thing will last for three years, four years, five years, whatever it is. And we can go with that model and see if that's acceptable. I mean, I think, uh, you know, it's a start, it's a jumping off point. Um, but at the same time, I, I understand the hesitation too. I think, uh, with that board, we'd have that flexibility. You'd have representation, um, you'd have a vote, just like any other board. That would be, you know, yes, we need to do this, no, we don't. Obviously, we'd bring in experts perhaps to say, hey, you know, what's the life of an ambulance? What's the life of the equipment in the ambulance? Uh, what do they need in an ambulance? Um, and I know costs go up. Everybody, you know, all the costs go up for buying this equipment and.
Well, once you arrive at that, you know, what the actual cost is per, per year. Maybe you set the thing, you put a one-time perpetuating fund there. It's a hundred thousand dollars a year, you get a perpetuating fund and they have funds and then nobody has to be taxed beyond that. You know, it's like you want to pay. You know, everybody kicking a thousand bucks this year in their house, nine hundred properties or whatever it is, okay, we'll put a million and a half dollars in and you get ten percent interest in a fund or something.
Yeah, well, no.
No tax anymore. It's perpetuating on, it's all it can be used for. You know what I mean? Then it perpetuates.
Yeah, the Council of Amires, uh, to your question, that, that would not be for, for staffing. That would be specified within a contract, uh, to be.
He had a question? Go ahead.
How many ambulances are on order right now?
I believe they have four.
On order right now?
No, I don't, I don't, I'm ordering, I'm sure, I know they have four, you know, so now.
Three on order, right?
I, um.
Two, two on order?
Three, two for sure, the third one they sent in, they had already worked. So that could be someone that just read out the date, just boom, we got to wing it.
Well, I think they have.
To pay literally to get here, so everybody's taxed crazy first year?
Well, no, I think, I think, I think what the amount is, is what the amount is. It's not going to increase or decrease.
It's going to be based on what that group wants.
And obviously, we're not going to go in with a million dollar bill right out of the gate because it will never get off the ground. My person would probably support that either. But I think to get it to a, I think a smaller perpetual number that keeps this rotation continuing will help them. Uh, yeah, it will help them financially, sure will, but it'll also.
What you're talking about right now, if he's got three on order and they cost a hundred and fifty thousand just using that same number, okay. And we give a hundred and fifty thousand through your, your incentive here. All right, wait, the three hundred thousand negative this year again. Now, next year, they got new ambulance and obviously they wouldn't get one. So we could start paying that debt down. From what I understand, the city's in pretty tough shape. They have to get that ambulance, well, they got to get their budget down. I just, we keep talking ambulance, but it's a city budget that has to get in line. And, and you know, but if they're ordering three ambulance, they're sure hell they could get in line by, you know, if we give a hundred and fifty, there still would be three hundred on the shoulder.
Well, and I.
And we might manage our fund, but that ain't helping your problem. They're right here tomorrow.
No, it's, but.
While we need more.
But, but the, but the key word is it's their problem. That's the key word, it's theirs. It's not our problem at that point. We're contributing, I would, you know.
But I hear, well, everybody needs the ambulance, you got to pay, you know, and then they'll be here again. I've mentioned this before.
That's, that's fine, but I, but I think, I think it will come to a point where enough would be enough, to be honest.
Well, I, I do know if they order three, you can get replacement, got it next year.
Right.
You know, we'd be a hundred and fifty. Well, that's to help pay for the one we bought last year and the year before and keep going down. Bert, do you have a question?
Yeah, when you're, when you say it's their problem, they, we're doing, this is an idea to keep the ALS program, right? And not going to BLS. What happens if International Falls continues to not be able to manage their money and they lose the ALS anyway? Are we still stuck in this taxing, they're still paying for the ambulances? Are we no longer have the upper service?
Well, then, then it would more than likely, if there's a service, it would be abolished.
Okay.
So it would be abolished and I think that that's stated in the statute language.
Okay.
That if the service is continuing, it would be abolished.
I, I look at it a couple of different ways. I look at it like, okay, so we're, we're providing and helping provide an ambulance to a service. Now, just think of it as any service in the world, right? Could be anybody doing anything from anywhere. If, if you, if you're providing that service, and let's say there are financial issues, just like you mentioned, that they do, say, can't make it financially. And they say, you know what, I can't do this. We kind of have a, a little bit of leverage there to draw somebody in, I think, too, and saying, hey, you know what? We have a district already formed. Can you do this for this? Can you provide us service, whether it be ALS, BLS? What can we get for this? What can you help us with? If, if we were ever to get to that point, like you mentioned, where the funding is such where they can't afford to keep the ALS or, or BLS and they have to just fold up and leave. So I, you know, I think it's important because I, I think if anyone else were to come in there, they're going to maybe ask for a similar thing, maybe not. I don't know that for, for certainty. Uh, but we would have a little bit of leverage on both sides of this coin a little bit too, Uh, but we would have a little bit of leverage on both sides of this coin a little bit too, as a separate entity as well, because we know we have to provide this service, right? We have to have this ambulance to get us to the, to the hospital. Uh, from, from there, I, I could go off into a rabbit hole on the ambulance, uh, what they, what should happen from the hospital to hospital, but I won't do that today because we're not here for that. So I won't bore you with what I think, um, because it's probably not right anyway. But to get us to the hospital for that next level of care, to be able to transport us to the next level of care, I think is the contribution that, you know, we, we're considering. And again, we, you know, we have a lot of hoops to jump through. Um, there's a lot of discussion to have, you know, what's appropriate for funding an ambulance. How many do they need? Maybe they, maybe go on a three-year rotation, you go on a four-year rotation. I hear you. If the mileage isn't there and the, and the calls are down, well, there's no need to have a new ambulance with fifty thousand miles on it. You can probably get a hundred and fifty out of it before you have to do some major work. So, um, and I know you probably understand that more than anyone, so I, I won't, you know. But I think that's kind of what we're, we're here to discuss and, and for you all to consider, um, you know, we've.
You know, I want to make clear, just on a personal note here. I didn't want to seem negative about this. I'm trying to clarify a lot of things here. Like I said, I'm willing to pay my share of more. Don't have an issue with that, never have. But I want to understand that this guy, that guy over there understands, okay, the guy in the apartment is not paying, but this guy's paying. And if you figure they raise his rent twenty dollars, because his, his rent went up twenty dollars, because that's all the property got out of that apartment went up. But yours was five hundred.
Right.
Oh, okay. And then, and then again, you know, I like to help everybody out, like I said. But I wonder if you're in case this, you know, whether the, you know, I, I attended the ambulance meeting in International Falls. Obviously, in International Falls, there was a consensus that we definitely around this. They didn't say how much it would cost each individual to keep it. They all wanted it. But there was never a price paid attached to, you want something, can you afford something? And then they said, well, you know, and, and obviously there were strong feelings and emotions from the, you know, paramedics, the ambulance people. Obviously, I think it is a better system and no question. But, you know, champagne, case and beer pocketed, you know. And those things, like I said, it don't bother me. I'm one that's probably least affected, but I want to make clear that if we're willing to pay, how much are you willing to pay? Do we have some control over what's being spent, when to be spent in a different way to keep it, you know, more level from, for the individual rather than, like I said, they all people, they don't own property.
Well, everything's.
That's another, you know, legitimate point as far as I'm concerned.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, but you know, we, you know, legal way of doing it.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I.
Yeah, we don't do it now.
Yeah, I.
Correct.
Well, we want to, I want to create something, he won't, he won't let me. I want to say, let's go out and collect fifty dollars from everyone. Everyone that has a parcel over ten thousand bucks, let's go get fifty dollars from them people, no matter what it is. No matter what kind of parcel is, how big, how small, where it is, where it isn't, it's fifty bucks. And you'd get to your number with the parcels that we have to get to that number of a hundred and fifty thousand with the fifty-six dollar bill. So it's possible to do that, we just don't have an avenue to get there. I, I'm all for that if we can do it. Because I personally think that would be extremely fair, because one person necessarily, it shouldn't be based on evaluation. I, I believe it should be, you know, it's a feat.
Well, don't think we're the only cookie in the jar that has this problem right now. There may be somebody somewhere to come up with a creative idea. And I don't know how much recently we've done into this, you know, there's lots of rural community communities out there. There might be some accountant sitting behind there, sits on one of these committees and says, no, we can do it. I know there's got to be the legal part because that's what you guys are operating on, what you can fairly tax, honestly tax or, you know.
Right.
Legally taxed, not legally taxed, this is it, I understand it. But there may be a, a fund that you can set up that you can tax everybody different. There may be, I mean, there's lots of community out there with this problem. How did you get around with it? You know what I mean? There's, there's, seems to me there's always a loophole somewhere. And, and I'm willing to look at that.
I am too, and I, and I've looked at the ground rules. Cass County, um, is trying to get around this and they just did the same thing with the creation of an emergency medical services district. And when I was trying to get creative, I, I brought in the attorney general's office for help and I said, I want to do this, can I, no. You can't, can't do it that way because we want to piggyback on, on rural fire, that, that seemed the easiest.
Trust me, you're on the end of it, I totally agree with you. But I switch accountants and they come up with all kinds of different ideas that the other guy didn't think of. Totally legal, you know what I mean? So I'm just saying, there's a lot of community out there, somebody might have some other angle of, of doing it, whether it's a child combination, I don't know, but anyway. So I'm, I'm pretty, to, to cap this up then, uh, you're looking to establish a fund, correct me if anything went wrong here. To establish a fund based on some kind of property tax value. Set up a board to control how that money is spent, whether it's basically right now, you're suggesting, uh, repetitious of ambulance replacement.
Yep.
And, uh.
No, we just have to sit back and talk about it next.
Well, certainly, yeah. And, but that, that's what you really presented here and you, and you got us legitimate, uh, right now, based on evaluations and things like that, we have charts and that, now we got to do it. Now, the other question is to form a district, we have a district already, but should one city, and I'm putting this out there just so everybody understands the ground rules here. We don't have to belong to a district. They still have to supply us ambulance service. Is that correct or incorrect?
Correct, that's correct.
That is correct. So whether we choose or not choose to pay these additional taxes, if you put a taxing district and puts it on our property taxes, then, then we're paying.
Well, well, technically we can. Legally, 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 we cannot do that. Legally.
Right, the taxing district taxes for that district, but we're not part of that district, so we don't get it. When I say we, Rainier don't get that tax.
It would not, yeah.
So, correct. Just so everybody in Rainier knows that, we don't have to belong to the district. They still have to supply the same ambulance service we have. The tax, if they choose to go with this tax district, the other members who's ever in that taxing district, who have St. Louis County, the members of Cooch County, outside of Rainier residents would be paying that tax. And if, you know, it's a hundred thousand, then that's what it would be, a hundred thousand. Okay, so I just want to make sure everybody understands that. I mean, we do have an option, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
And, and again, I'm pointing that out, it's not necessarily what I would consider or not consider. I just want to make sure everybody's clear. So, oh, we got to do it or we're going to look at the taxing district. It's something we don't have to do, what we have to do, what we're looking here is a solution to help the city of International Falls with their deficit on their, well, on their big budget. I don't want to say it's the ambulance budget, it's the city budget.
Well, we, yeah, and keeping it, keeping it, you know, uh, simpler for me helps me. Uh, so if we're, if we're buying ambulance is, that's what we're buying. We're buying an ambulance.
That, that's right, that's right. So that relieves them from buying ambulance.
Exactly. I mean, it's going to help them, yes, financially, yes. Um, but yet it also, it also is, is a, is a, is a good, uh, it's a good notion for us to do that so they, you know, we have this, uh, we do have the control, I guess, is the point. You know, we have, you know, if, if we're our own entity, um, you know, if St. Louis County wants to go, then, then technically we, we would have our partner. Um, and, and then we would be able to partner up with them. Um, if that doesn't happen, I guess, I don't know what's going to happen, to be honest.
You know, you know, you talk about rabbit holes. They're trying to get seventy-five million dollar hospital. They're on the right path, they're back online. I know what issues, some of the issues that exist for them. I'm going to offer my services to help them make that happen. So I'm a hundred percent behind what the needs of this community are. So I'm devoting resources and time into helping that hospital. I don't know if there's an avenue that somehow, because the USDA is, is, or I think it's, someone's going to, if there's an avenue to the hospital construction, that somehow this ambulance fund can be, you know, if, if the state is looking at, you know, I don't know if they went for the state to bond you, I'm going to have to ask Rob that. Part of it is to, you know, how is ambulance, so they pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year rent or building or something that would do just what you're doing.
Yep.
The state may contribute to the hospital fund, which is obligated to pay ambulance rent, you know, for the building for an ambulance. I mean, an ambulance, an ambulance building is not unheard of at a hospital. So maybe, maybe they can add that to it and there's funding available for them for the, again, that's what I'm saying. There may be some creative idea out there that we can come up with the same money and, and leverage, you know, some bonding to state or whatever it is. So I, I just, I just want to brainstorm some stuff out there. And I'm going to talk to Rob about that because there may be such a thing, he may not lie, anything piggyback on it because he has a hard, hard enough time getting this thing to work anyway, but again, there may be some, whoa, we built an ambulance building, yeah, we can add another hundred, hundred fifty thousand or a million dollars a year to that. At a hundred and fifty, we got this, you know, add a million and a half, we can pay for this every year for the charity.
Right.
I'm going to talk to him about that, so I'll, I'll do that.
Yeah, absolutely, so.
Okay, I think we're clear. Any questions, council?
Well, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for coming up. We got clarity on what you guys are trying to do.
Okay, good.
And if you're not understanding where we are.
Yeah, if you have any questions, please reach out, uh, we'll try to answer them.
I'm sorry, I never did get your name.
Joan Nelson.
Joan?
Joan Nelson.
Joan Nelson?
And just for reference, too, I don't remember, I want to check for that statute. I'm just going to show you right on the chart, it's, um, one forty-four F O one, is that emergency medical service tax and district.
Okay. All right. Where are we?
Uh, Convention and Visitors.
Jennifer?
Do you have a question? I don't know, I don't know.
Sure, I guess I could put you in the colonial group.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
And you are.
I'm Katrina Hyble. Not the end.
This is your?
Yes.
Katrina?
Joan?
I, I, yeah, I'll share with Jeff, if you can get anyone.
Hi, council and mayor, I'm Katrina Hyble and, uh, a little bit, can you hear me now? Okay, I'm Katrina Hyble. I'm the executive director at the International Falls, Rainier and Rainy Lake Convention and Visitors Bureau. And our mission is to promote travel and tourism that generates overnight and economic impact to our servicing area. The CBB is a nonprofit organization that's funded by a three percent lodging tax. So when a visitor comes and stays at one of our hotels, resorts, houseboats, they pay a three percent. And then the lodging operators remit that to the cities or the county. And it is a Minnesota state law that the funds are to be spent on promoting the area outside of the region. In the last year since I've been in this position, today is my anniversary. Um, I've seen over five hundred visitors come into our CBB chamber office building. And that has been really cool to see visitors from all over the world coming into the area. I had people from Australia who are motorcycling across the US. I had a family from Spain stop in and then a dad just recently dropped his daughter off at Rainy River College from Holland. So that was really awesome to see. We're seeing a trend in guests wanting to visit all voyagers, or not all voyages, sorry, national parks. And in the last year, there's over two hundred thousand visitors at voyagers. They're coming to fish, wildlife, northern lights, international dark sky. Families are bringing their kids for Camp Coach, so they're coming from the southern states. We've got a new geocache that I've had people come from Arkansas and Texas just for that. And they're coming for their nexus interviews, going to Canada, business meetings and working on the infrastructures. There is a total of thirty-eight lodging facilities in the region. So International Falls, we've got eight hotels in short term. Rainier, we've got cantilever and cabins in short term. And then we have houseboats and resorts in short term on Rainy Lake. Lodging tax, so from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, lodging tax averaged an annual hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Since the new hotels in short term, there has been a fifteen, fifty-seven percent increase in lodging tax over the last five years. In this past fiscal year, we brought two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So all those funds are for marketing the area. And then we can estimate that millions of dollars are coming into the community for the five to seven percent ripple effect. So they're not just staying at lodging, they're going to the restaurants, retail attractions, gas stations and more. And when a visitor comes to the area, they often fall in love, they come again, they might buy a cabin, they might start a business. And that is the long-term halo effect of tourism at work. Our marketing budget is forty percent into digital, so that's Facebook ads, Google ads. Twenty percent into print, thirty percent into broadcast media, five percent into travel guides and postage and memberships. And then content creation is five percent as well. So the last, that's lower, um, because the last two years, we've had a company come and film the area and then this year I've been filming quite a bit. This is our website views and since we started the digital camp, campaign, we have seen that it's increased tremendously. We have about a hundred thousand views since then, this year. Our social media is growing rapidly. A lot of our reels are consistently hitting over ten thousand views and reaching a broader audience beyond the region. And we're using engaging seasonal content to spotlight events and attractions and local businesses and it's working. So some of the print, our budget is lower now, but we do see value in some of these, like outdoor news, Midwest outdoors, um, Minnesota snowmobiling and Minnesota regulations. Our broadcast media, so we do a big campaign with ads during the high school tournaments for basketball and, uh, hockey and that gets combined two million views. So that they see our name on the jumbotron, our commercials are broadcasted across the state. And then we do a big campaign with Midwest outdoors, they come up here and film fishing episodes in the spring and in the fall and then those are promoted the next season. Travel guides, we have, we printed out sixteen thousand of these last year. We mail these directly to requests from our website and Explore Minnesota. I think August I sent out three hundred of them. Um, and then when a visitor comes into the office, I go through it and show them the map and circle areas that they can go check out. We distribute these across Minnesota and at events and trade shows and local businesses. These help promote lodging, attractions and dining and seasonal activities. They're also available digitally on rainylake.org. Our next biggest project right now is we're working on a new website that's going to be mobile friendly and travel minded. It's going to have advanced searching so the visitor can look exactly where they want to stay at International Falls or Rainier. And then they can check off amenities like pet friendly, lakefront. It's going to have an interactive map, so like Smokey Bear will be on there that the visitor can go check out that area. And then something we're working on right now is the curated itinerary, so it's going to be kind of like a shopping cart. So they can pick, like they want to go hiking or go see, go to the Bob Walk or Voyagers. And then it will make a PDF that they can print out their planned trip. It's going to have better data tracking and insights so that the CBB can, um, help guide future marketing decisions. And ways to get involved, I always encourage businesses to share visitor friendly updates with the CBB. We have an events page. Share the CBB resources. I have maps and the brochures over there of the area that you can give to people. And share the love of the area with your friends and family and always welcome visitors warmly because the littlest interaction makes the biggest impact. And sharing the pictures and videos because I love to share those. Any questions?
I've got a question for the convention center. Working with the park, I think it's got an AP. I don't know what to call them, aspirations. You, you should maybe start putting that bug in the park area to have like a bike trail all the way to Petal Falls. I mean, biking is really.
Did you say a bike trail in Petal Falls?
Yes, a bike trail in Petal Falls. There's these guys that bike for miles and miles and miles.
And you can get all the way.
And that will draw a lot of people there. And also your hiking.
Yeah.
One thing you don't advertise much here, we have super good cross-country skiing.
Yes.
And then with that Bob Walk, you can cross that and access all those cross-country trails.
Yep.
And so I think you should do a little more advertising for the cross-country because, you know, I think in the summer we do pretty good. We pull in a lot of turds, but it's those what they call shoulder seasons.
Yes.
But winter's always been a killer for us. We rely on snowmobiles and that, which is coming back. But that hiking, I, I know was it not last, yeah, it was last year, it was such a great dry year and they, they walked them trails in there behind, you know, gills in there and it was fantastic. We don't many people are on the trail, so I think that's something that they should be promoting more, that cross-country. And you have a really good cross-country club in town.
Yeah.
And they groom the trails and everything, so it's just a matter of getting the word out there. And once people come, you know, they got beautiful facilities and of course they stay in hockels and, you know, and things like that. I think that would be something you should be pushing. There's lots of, you don't bump into a lot of people there. That's one thing we want to take it, take advantage of, lack of population. People like that, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't move in Naples because you, you know, you can't say that, you can't eat in a restaurant or things like that. So lack of population is a plus sometimes. If you go there, it's not.
Right. Yeah, so that is my goal.
But that would be a, you know, so you should be working with the park and, and something like that, you know, that park is so, it's a tremendous piece of property there. If it could be developed, and it's there for tourists, but how can they develop a. And it's there for tourists, but how can they develop it more? They got the interior lakes that,
Yeah.
you know, that bike trail could go by, people can camp, well, look at all their island, all their island camps.
Lakes.
You gotta get a reservation on them.
Yep.
Well, they got all the interior lakes, the same thing, Petal Falls would be.
Yeah.
That's, that's a big picture view of something you should maybe bring up with the park. You know, who knows?
Yeah.
There's several, I don't know if they're going to pay for that either.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Chris?
No, any?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, now we're up to Jen.
Okay. So, Corinna, does anyone want any resources?
I heard that. Which one of these is correct? The one that's not having anything on it?
The one that's right.
That is the correct one for twenty-twenty-five. We have a pool here.
Right, because that's. It changed after I got some bells.
He learned the biggest one. Must have redid this one because this one is twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-four is there.
Okay. Why is it, why is it different here? I have a point with Mike, but it's not the one I want.
You want mine?
It's only a fifty percent.
Well, it looks like you had a, had a good month, Jen. How, how did the, obviously the month turned out pretty good. Was Rainier Days paid for the bands and everything? Is that where the increase come or?
Um, well, I think.
It did. I mean, it's a good month, eighteen percent or seventeen percent.
We did add another band this year for Friday night, but, um.
Return on investment, that's what I'm saying.
It was.
Was it worth it, I guess?
I guess it was hard to say because the year before we did like cornhole and, you know, that doesn't cost anything to do.
Right.
But it was always so cold on Friday night, so I kind of got away from that and tried a band. But definitely didn't have the audience as we did on Saturday night. So kind of a trial and error, see where we go.
Population may only have one good night in it. Let's go one more.
Good bunch for that one.
Two nights, no. You know, Friday night, if you would have been out, you might not have Saturday night.
Yeah, you never know.
You know, again, it, it's hard to say. You know, you got to try something.
Yeah, I, I do think paying for the band that we do pay for definitely is worth it. It did bring out a huge crowd on Saturday night.
So what's on for this month?
Um, not much because we're moving into Shaq season. It's already died off of, you know, quite a bit at the muni. But we are going to try to squeeze in our first cribbage tournament and we're going to open early for the football game here at the end of the month and I think right now we just kind of coast and see where we go.
I'm not much at social media. I don't have a track. I don't turn it on. So, but you might advertise a lot on social media, like football games, you know, potlucks, football games. And I think that, I know, I was just aware, but I think from your last meeting, people bring whatever, you know, you had a potluck and watched the game.
Yeah, we had chili last night.
It could maybe expand on that a little bit. Now that I know it.
And watch the game?
You know, I, I heard from you, otherwise, you know, you get a full house then or?
It did averages, yeah. Depends on the night of the game too, you know, like last night we had chili and we had an okay crowd, but being a Monday night, you know, it's not that huge.
Well.
But like a Sunday game, you know, a potluck set is a better way.
But you put that all on social media, but it might be something you can flare up a little bit. I don't know.
Well, we just found a Sunday they went on during that Kevin Burton.
Yeah, we did, we did that last minute, eight hour notice and we were packed.
And the bar was packed. I mean, the guy.
You did what?
They had on Facebook that this Kevin Burton, he's a artist, musical artist.
He's staying here in Rainier right now and he's just up fishing and he came into the bar, absolutely fell in love with it.
An additional drawing from.
Yeah, and he just said, do you care if I play here tomorrow night? And I said, do you care if I post it?
You just have to pick up on, you know, what he wants, when they walk in, what they do, but somehow you have to. That's one thing with social media, you can quickly advertise it, right?
Yeah, it was kind of watching it up real fast.
Yeah, but not every day you get a celebrity in town either.
All of those sales, you know, are beginning to.
Right.
Okay.
I got one question, Jen. You know what it is?
Oh, that, that can be answered by Nick. There was a part for the bobcat that he can't get his hands on to move it. That's all I've been told.
We, we waited in construction for a little.
You can use it. Just come here.
I want to move.
We can, we drive to.
How?
Oh, to the store, yeah. They got a spot.
You can, is there a lifting, a spreader change? How do you lift it or you just drag it?
No, we have a center, a center, a big tire wheel, like a rack or anything goes on the inside. It's a chain that goes to the top with.
Oh, and then you just reach up.
Reach up and grab. We tried it with a different front loader and it wasn't big enough. But here's, here's the thing.
You lose one. Come and get it. Yeah, okay.
I'd like to.
Come here.
Yeah.
Just bring it back. I love how I used a cat once, three years later I got it. Three years. I just forgot. Need anything?
I think.
Okay. Any more questions for Jen?
No. I'd like the motion to pass the, or.
You need a motion to a recommendation, right?
To accept the liquor store operator's statement and the report.
Have a recommendation set now, favor?
I, yes.
Both? So carry. Nick, maintenance report? What's that?
Playground.
KGM is going to block cop the jail.
Yep.
On Monday, we told Steve Wright for Monday, they also have the city parking lot, or the city hall. They're doing, so there could be help in a few days to get called the state. There's a district girl in the state. And I contacted her through the county guy up to Trent. And she said, yeah, so she, I don't know where we are on that, but I said the windows.
I, I spoke to Mike, I spoke to Mike Wallace and it sounds like they're, Mike Wallace at the city. I spoke to him and also Trent too. And because I had contacted KGM and it sounded like they wanted kind of nothing to do with that small of a project. Well, Mike had talked to him and it sounded like they scheduled these guys to come up here and they have like seven days of work that got lifted off their schedule. So they have seven days, so they're doing one on Conroe Twenty, they're going to do that one. And then they have like four days in I Fall's of doing patches on Eleventh Street, Twentieth and Fifteenth.
They also have to do the jail.
Yep.
Northern National Bank. So they got that. So we tried to. October third, I have my own black copper coming in. So if for some reason, they got seven days, they get two arranged, they got five, they take it off our schedule. I know how they work.
Yep.
They got commitments with penalties. We don't have penalties on our jobs, you know, like that. So you're the one who would be the one that's not going to get it, you know. So, but October third, I have our black copper coming in who does act for them. So if for some reason they miss the date, of course I'll know about it.
The only question I had on that, since it's a state, county road, not, not our city-owned road, for the thicknesses of blacktop, it's going to be different than our city roads, correct?
Well, it's a county road.
County, so it's going to be.
It's a county. And so I think we've had this conversation, the county should pick up the mix. You know, if they ever rebuild, when they rebuild these roads, county is responsible for all the blacktop. We're responsible for the pipe underneath, you know, if we own the pipe. The owner of the road's the county, you know, and so I think the county.
Yeah.
They can.
Well, if we destroy the road, it's whatever, they didn't have water lines, we have to pay them.
That's how it's been. We've had to pay for them.
Right. We have to repair them.
And that's why I was curious on what the thickness is, if I have to get a hold of Trent to see how thick that road has to be for what ton?
Well, I can get you a price per ton on October third. I can get that probably tomorrow. And we'll see what KGM's going to charge.
Yeah.
And KGM, you know, I got a more control over my guy and he does that.
Well, I can. KGM.
That's when they did the stuff down here.
Yeah.
So let, let me get a price on tomorrow.
Yeah, because they, I mean, they, they just called around everybody they could and tried to get out of doing that out there.
How big is it? Well, it has to have some distance usually, but I think it could be five inches.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty thin.
Four. But see, that's been overlaid so much, they don't have to put it in more than four. You know, because this is, you know, it's tiny, the road goes on thickness of blacktop. It wouldn't be more than five.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Four.
What's the size of that property? Oh, it's thirty by forty?
Yep.
Thirty by forty? Okay, I'll get the tiny John, I'll get a price for that and then we'll have to get a price from KGM too.
Okay. Todd, playground, October, the first week of October, we're doing two curb stops for residents in town. One of them, they're adding a curb stop and tying in another waterline. Steve is going to come dig them and that same week we're going to dump them, put the post hole digger off over there and start digging to put the, the mainframe in.
To do what?
For the new playground equipment.
Because if we wait till spring, then it's going to fall behind.
Well, we'll have, we'll have the main one in there, the main hub of it in there with the concrete to settle over winter.
Okay, we missed out on another first.
First, the first week of October is when we're doing the curb stands. We want to get them ones done first and then we'll head over there.
How old is the little library out here? Is that being redone?
Yep, that's, uh, Jack Carney deals with all the little library.
Awesome, thank you.
Uh, the railroad didn't let the bridge for the bridge. I don't know who's a little bitter, I'm going to find out tomorrow. But that guy's in town. Well, he'll be around, so I'll, I'll get a sketching from the contractor. I know the railroad don't talk to you, but the contractor will.
Yeah.
Because we got to work with them, so.
Yeah, and I've been in contact with a couple of different guys. They've been calling and asking questions about laydown. They also asked about our, our, uh, our little park down there again. And I said, that's something you're going to have to talk to the council. I don't, I know I talked to Jen about that. Just quick touch base on that.
What, what do you mean? Like, I, I know we discussed about the, their questioning, their use of the boat launch. And they, I mean, did they straight up say, well, probably damage it?
No, they told me they're going to crater it and then they're going to redo it.
But they, they don't have the right to just do that.
Right. So that's why I said this is something you guys have to come to a meeting. I can't give you a yes or no answer.
Have they communicated with you at all about any?
Yeah, it's a public boat landing, but they can't specify. She's, they were using it all the time.
Yeah, and that guy was very, very abrupt saying, we are going to wreck it and then we will redo it and we will redo it.
They're planning on using this.
Well, that's how I'll get you a sketch.
Because if they're doing this next July, I mean, this is our prime boat launch, like they can't.
Did you, I have to mention, have you seen increasing boat traffic?
Yes.
There's fifteen cars there all the time.
It's getting well known.
Well, it's, well, it's long as that dock, you know, in the riverine highs, we can get out, we don't have that thing. I think, it is a bit, come, why do you want to drive through it? Especially the guides and stuff around the North Arm, I mean, why do you want to drive all the way back? Thunder River, Rainy Lake Resort Center, all the way back. It's, it's fantastic.
I just, I just want to get our ducks in a row legally so that we know what they can and can't do. So if I need to march down there and tell them they can't do something, I need to know what I'm in my place to do.
And this guy knows that he can't do a thing until I told him, I said, this is not a question that I can answer. I said, I, I can, you have to go talk to the council, the mayor and you figure it all through.
What are they going to do that?
It was a contractor, it wasn't CNN, so I mean, I don't think he's.
Contractors take the trees the first time.
Right, and hopefully he doesn't.
Well, first of all, Jen, this will help you out. Before they do anything, we'll demand a pre-con, a pre-construction conference. There we can lay, lay out our, our terms and conditions for using our boat landing. You know, obviously they have a payment bond and, you know, the other guy didn't break it, but he did fix it.
Right.
So, so that, and they will have a bond post and all that other stuff. But we may want to really consider, okay, this is our usable hours. We don't want you guys, you know, for a certain amount of hours, you know, you can use it before seven or before eight and after six or so, you know, and stuff like that. We will discuss that at the pre-con and then you'll know. Like you say, if somebody calls, you know, we told you to use it. Because they'll put their boat in, they'll put their barge in. If it's at six o'clock in the morning, you'll get up and do that. They don't have to come at eight o'clock when everybody's trying to get in.
I don't, I don't want to make it difficult for them.
No, no, but it, it.
I just want to know.
Putting the rules in will make it easy for them. They understand that, you know, they're not going to use it. And if they do, you know, what it is, you know, they'll understand it. This is your operating hours. We're limited all the time. You know, we can't start before seven, we can't work after six. So that, we, we can make those rules. These contractors are used at working within parameters. And, and so at the pre-con, we will bring that up, period.
And it sounded like.
You'll know and then somebody asks, it's, it's clear.
And it sounded like too, he asked a ton of questions about road, road limits as far as weight on roads, so I gave him more.
Weights on roads and again obligations to fix them and everything else.
Yep, and he, he pretty much said that any they're going to be holding up here is going to be over what our roads are.
Well, they, I can tell you right now, if Kramer North, North America, they want to rebuild. Remember when they got some ad, I mean, I told them to build the road all the way to the, you know, to the forty-six? Well, guess what Kramer, Kramer North America put in their thing. We got to bring a lot of stuff in there. Part of our proposal, because they asked me for the price to gravel and they, they're in your proposal, they're black copying that road and redoing the road right behind, or Rainy Lake Grill.
Yep.
And I said, well, why aren't you doing that? Why don't you make it another block farther and they're right at forty-six? You know, so, you know, because they, they could have access to this stuff, so. Because they, you know, they, they didn't want to jump over the tracks and play a, pay a flagger to crop everyone. Would KGM use their other thing? So then they built that, you know, how much that cost to go that little wooden thing and put up stop signs and had flaggers there. That's the rules. So they got to have flaggers there. Well, hell, they said it's cheap, they just built you a little road right there. I said, well, I put that all down.
Yep.
And so, so where, if, if, if they're the ones that got the contract, it was in their proposal to do that.
I had three different contractors calling me.
Yeah, and I think it was five.
Yeah, three, three of them.
Three of them, so, well, I'll find out in the next day or so who's, can, you know, they might shortlist them.
Okay.
Kramer does the bulk of their work.
Okay.
And that's what we do, talk to particularly.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's what I know about that, so. And we do, I'll get a price tomorrow for the next eight on, I'll have it before the next meeting on the cost of that block down.
Is your loader at the cement plant? I can grab that. Your loader?
Yeah, we got two loaders, so which one, they don't matter either. The monsoons just setting. But keep stories, correct propane, so not, you know.
Oh, silos, yep.
Let's keep one there or one under a new plant. I don't think Jason has any concrete tomorrow, but they might add gravel. So he might let you do it, probably.
I got Jason's number.
We'll, we'll get you.
I'll line it up.
We'll get you. Okay, uh. That's it. Anyone for Nick?
We also got rid of, um, that. I don't know what you want to call it. We had a really bad blight issue back behind, in, uh, French Edition. That we went and took care of and got rid of all that. It was all off of, uh, on sale on our city property.
Oh, I didn't see.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, you cleaned it up?
Yeah, I, I went in with the skid steer and we loaded everything up and dumped trailers and flattened it and got it all out of there. Um, a lot of it went to different areas and that. But it was thirteen hundred and eighty-four dollars or something like that that we're going to have to.
Put against the profit?
Yep, yep. It, it would, it probably would have been a lot more, but Andrew Haller did let, you know, he said, you come and help with the skid steer. It's going to cost way less, so. Just a heads up that all that's gone now.
Okay.
Anything else for Jen?
Beautiful. We missed the, uh, the levy.
What, we got items on the agenda that we have a morning.
Right above the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're, we're above it?
No, right above it, we gotta, we gotta.
Yeah, we're gonna do that.
We gotta have a resolution to do the tax levy. I'll make that recommendation. Just as it's laid out.
Oh, and the resolution for the cash.
Yeah, this one. Yeah, this one. It's this right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, on the tax levy, uh, the resolution. Nick, well, let's finish with Nick first because the next item and then we'll be back there. Let, let's go over, uh, the capital and bonding investment tour you offered to go to them. Guys telling me, me and Jen, like one year, anybody want to go to it? Nick offered to go to it.
Yeah, I can go to it.
He gave the one, he went down to City and he gave that.
But this one here is at Vermillion in Virginia where I think the same place we went. Is this one?
Eli.
Eli. What, what was your ask on that?
Three hundred thousand.
Can we change it?
I don't think so.
No? Okay. Okay, um, well, then, then, uh, that's it. The tax forfeit plan, that's a recommendation down to Nick. Anything for Nick? Anything else? Thanks, man.
Thanks, guys.
And just check with Jason, either the console or the other.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get all of them. Thank you.
You want forks on it? Forks on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Let's jump back to that, on the tax levy. I, I think our tax levy, my personal opinion is since we've been here, we've never had more than a thirty-six percent levy, have we?
Nope.
And, and thirty-six percent should be about three hundred and twenty-two thousand bucks. Rough guess. And so we had pulled like three fifteen or something, but we've never achieved a thirty-six cents or thirty-six percent. I don't think we need to. I think even at thirty-six percent. And whatever that is, just do the math on it again.
Okay.
And keep it at still close to the whole colony. And whatever it is, it is. It's about three twenty-two. That's about, what is that, about twenty-five thousand more than last year?
Twenty, twenty-six.
Yeah, we had two ninety last year.
If you do thirty-six percent.
Pardon me?
Sorry. If you do thirty-six percent, it's like twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars.
One hundred and twelve. That's our tax. And they still at thirty-six percent, so we've had no increase. Are you okay with that? We need a resolution, Todd?
We need a resolution just to accept the levy, whatever we come up with.
Okay. Want to make a recommendation?
I'll recommend, I'll make a recommendation that we go with the tax levy of thirty-six percent if they're...
Oh, second guess.
Motion accepted, in favor?
Aye.
Both, so Karen, okay, good. Public, the tax forfeit plan, where is that at?
It's on the highway, corner nine two and a half.
Bargain's old property.
Who?
Remember Bargain's, Brown and Kim?
You on Bargain's?
Yep, yeah.
Their house is way across the road.
That's a deal quite good for the kids.
Yeah.
Everybody, I would put my friends. Okay.
That's your property.
Okay. And when they sell that, then we get a proceed from that, don't we? Whatever the county gives, we get it.
Or does it start with a percentage of it?
Yeah, we get a percentage of it. Okay.
Yeah, they're seeing the value of it as like...
How big a lot is that? I mean, I know where it is, but how, any idea how big it is?
It's three, it's four lots.
Oh, but they're twenty-five foot lots?
No, I think they're bigger.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Four lots?
Mm-hmm.
Point six one acres.
Am I?
Point six one acres.
Point six one?
It's called thirteen fourteen acres.
Well, acres too, eight by two ways. So it's a hundred by two hundred or a hundred and, hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen by two hundred. So that's a good side plot. Okay, I guess that's it. Open forum. Anyone have anything else?
Motion over here, in favor? Aye.
Aye, so Karen.